We are going to get this meeting started. We'll invite Councilmember Cook to come forward with the scouts.
Well, may I have all the wonderful scouts that are here in the council chambers come up to the front? And if you find young men can line up against the dais, that'd be great. And Matthew, if you can stand next to me here. Well, tonight, we are honored to have our scouts here, and we're going to have Matthew lead us and I pledge allegiance, if we can all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Let's have a round of applause for our scouts. If you could be so kind to introduce yourself by your name and what troop you're in and pass the microphone down. And then I have a special gift on behalf of the council, which is a pocket U.S. Constitution for thanking you for coming here.
Hi, I am Max Camp, and I am part of Troop 896, and I am a Star Rank.
Grant Speaker, Troop 896.
I am Michael Greer, and I'm from Troop 896.
I'm Britten Platt, and I'm from Troop 896.
I'm Douglas James Chapel, and I'm from Troop 896, and I'm Star Rank.
My name is Cole Johnson, and I'm from Troop 896.
My name is Matthew Camp, and I'm from Troop 896.
My name's Zach Lewis, and I'm from Troop 896.
I'm Ethan Hubbard from Troop 896.
I'm Bryn Cinkrocket from Troop 896, and I am Star Rank.
I am Owen Jackson from Troop 886. I am very happy to be here.
I'm Jay Lewis, Scout Master, Troop 896.
And again, let's have a nice round of applause for our scouts for thanking them for coming. And Mayor Lewis, we have a couple Lewises here. I'm not sure if they're related to the Lewis family, but you're represented. All right, thank you, gentlemen. You can go back to have your seat.
We'll next have the invocation by Councilmember Jared Taylor. Before we do so, we'll read the agenda. The invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk, and interested persons shall contact the clerk for further information. Councilmember Taylor.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this beautiful day. We're grateful that we can be together this evening. We're grateful for these favorable circumstances, the freedoms and liberties here in Gilbert in the state of Arizona and our country that Thou hast given us. We're grateful for all the wonderful people that we're able to associate in this wonderful town of Gilbert. We're grateful for the wonderful parents who teach their children how to be good, how to be kind. We're grateful for our faith community. We're grateful for teachers that educate their students. We're grateful for so many people that contribute to the positive aspects of our community. We're especially mindful this evening for those that are away, those that are fighting to defend our freedoms in countries abroad, and we pray for them and their safety. We pray that we'll have the spirit of understanding tonight, that we can accomplish Thy will is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Lisa, we'll have a roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook. Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Would all those who can give Vice Mayor Jordan Ray a big round of applause for getting this meeting started on time? What an excellent job. And I see town leadership that would say, why don't we just have Jordan? Mayor, you can be late. Thank you. Mayor's office, Kurt, if you could come forward and get those two slides going, then I'll come on down.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to go through a couple slides. We have an upcoming event I'd like to tell you about. The Downtown Concert Series continues next Thursday night at Water Tower Plaza, 6:30. Next week's band is called Sir Harrison Band, and if you haven't been to this venue right underneath the water tower, it's a great place for your friends and family to sing along with the band and dance and have a good time. So I encourage you all to put that on your calendar for next Thursday, 6:30. And our next slide here. I would like to give you a little bit of information on behalf of Kathy Pierce, a local East Valley resident that runs Arizona Heroes to Hometowns. They do fantastic programs for wounded troops and military families that are serving overseas. This is their next program that she wanted me to talk to you about. It's called Annual Turkeys for Troops, and she wanted me to ask the question, what can you do, or excuse me, yeah, what do 2,500 military families in Arizona need to have a Thanksgiving dinner? And that answer is you. If you are interested, I did put a stack of flyers in the back at the table by Chief Dorn, if you would like to pick one of those up. Basically, what they do, they have already partnered with food banks to supply 2,500 food boxes, but it's missing one ingredient, and that would be your ham or your turkey. So they are taking donations for grocery cards as well as monetary donations. So if you're interested, please go to the website here, azheroestohometowns.org, or pick up a flyer in the back. Thank you.
Agenda item number one, if I could have members of our team come on up here. On the agenda, it talks about a group of eight that returned a couple weeks ago from Lishan, China. Greg Tilke to my right, well, excuse me, to my right, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, and then to another right, Greg Tilke, the president of Gilbert Sister Cities. And I think I'm just going to pass the mic down while I go over and get the certificates of appreciation and introduce yourself. And then Greg, when the mic comes back, tell quickly what happened, and then I'll talk about the certificate of appreciation. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bridget Peterson, very lucky to have been able to take this trip to China with this great group of people.
Rich Ranarolli.
Gardinha La Madrid, digital journalist for Gilbert, Arizona.
And I'm Rudy Apadak. I'm the vice president of operations for dignity health at the Gilbert Medical Center.
Again, Greg Tilke, president of Gilbert Sister Cities. We signed this agreement in 2002 with the city of Lishan, China, and we've had a great opportunity. We've had, this is our fourth visit. We've taken businesses there. We've taken elective officials over there. They've done the same coming this way, so it's becoming a really good, strong program. We've also had the opportunity to have students. I think this is the sixth or seventh year we're sending students for student exchange, our youth ambassadors, back and forth. So that's going very well. So we're very excited to have this group along. We had a great visit and really strengthened the relationship, and thanks to Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Peterson for your help.
To each of you, you're about to receive a certificate of appreciation. Some of the wording, "To Gilbert Sister Cities 2015 China ambassadors. For services rendered in Lishan, China, representing Gilbert in government meetings with Secretary Tong and Mayor Zhang, for participating in the International Tourism Expo, business visits to Lishan Phoenix Semiconductor, the High Tech Zone, community visits to Lishan Experimental Middle School, the Green Hub, Museum, and Lishan Hospital, as well as visits to the Giant Buddha, Golden Summit, and Steam Train. Lastly, all ambassadors participated in various food settings with wonderful food that was delicious, new, and sometimes very interesting." It has all of your names, and then at the bottom, and I presented this last time to our town manager, additional notes for future discussion I put down from red carpet to seven a day to need more flowers, and so you'll appreciate that, too. So let me, Councilmember Peterson, if you can help pass those out, and two, to a couple of team members or spouses were not able to be with us. This was, and I turned to President Tilke. It was one of those events where he has been there before and well organized, and this is a group that has great appreciation for the United States, for Gilbert because of President Tilke. This team, we had one setting with Secretary Tong, and it just felt like we were totally representing the United States. They were totally representing China the way that it was so proper and diplomatic, in a sense. And so this group did such a fine job of representing Gilbert that we wanted to thank you. And I understand that there's a short video. Is this the time to play the video? Gardinha, please. Or Councilmember Peterson? Oh, we did forget that. Would you like to talk about this? Secretary Tong, who came to Gilbert last March, represents about 3.6 million citizens. The gift that he wanted us to bring back, the aid of us to Gilbert, is right here. And what this gift is, this is fu. And what fu is, is happiness. And so all the way from China, we bring back fu. We also have the scroll that we got from the middle school and all sorts of other things that will be part of continued history in Gilbert. And so, again, to the team, thank you. And now we roll the video.
Gardinha, one second, please. Sure. On behalf of the delegation, we want to thank you, Mayor Lewis, because you not only represented Gilbert, Arizona, but you stood in front of the delegation dinner and represented all of the delegates that were there from all of the countries, including Thailand, Australia, the United States, Spain, and Switzerland. Mayor Lewis was the only person that was asked to speak on behalf of any of the other countries that were in attendance, and I thought that you needed to be recognized for that, too.
Okay, let's roll it. We are pleased to be here. We consider you the family, and so I have a very big family. There are eight of us from Gilbert. You are all very excited to join me in coming on this special trip.
Thank you very much to come to our expo, especially the mayor you met yourself, who is such a dedication, I'm very happy.
Hi, I'm Mayor John Lewis. Are you sad that this video is over? Subscribe to our YouTube channel, and you will never be sad again, ever. Gardinha, that was fantastic. Big round of applause for Gardinha. That's part of council meetings for our scouts. Thanks again for coming. We get to watch cool videos every now and then. Now, Councilmember, oh, picture of the, we didn't take a picture yet, did we? All right, team, up here real fast for a picture, and then we'll get ready for our number, agenda item number two. Thank you. Thanks again. Councilmember Cook, come on up, and Ken, if you could also come up. This is not trying to interrupt. I simply wanted to say to our council, to our team leadership, to those who are here, this is one of our great Arizona leaders, Ken Strobeck. He's the executive director for the Arizona League of Cities, and I personally thank him for his leadership. And at this point, Councilmember Cook, please.
Well, Ken, why don't you share a little bit about your role here in our state?
Thank you, Councilman. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns is an organization that represents all 91 incorporated cities and towns in the state of Arizona, and it's my pleasure to be in the seventh largest municipality in the state, the largest town in the state of Arizona by far, the town of Gilbert. And what we do is we work at the legislature, we work with city councils and mayors all across the state to try to advance city issues. And we also call attention to the fact that the city is the closest level of government to the people and provides the most daily services on a regular basis, whether it's your streets, your water, the garbage, the police, the parks, whatever. Those are all city services, and a lot of times, we just don't even think about it. We fail to recognize that. So Cities and Towns Week, which is next week, is really an opportunity to call attention to those city services, just have people stop and think for a second and appreciate the many services that come through their cities and towns.
Well, it sounds like we should have a parade for Mayor Lewis, so he can be recognized here downtown. What do you think? I think it's a good idea. Well, we have to put you on the spot, Ken, because I'm thinking that you're thinking that maybe the town of Gilbert is your most favorite community out of the 91? Could you make some comment to that, or?
It's absolutely the favorite community that I'm in right now. No question about it.
Well, we will take that. So anyway, we have a proclamation. I'll just read a portion of this that you will receive on behalf of the mayor's proclamation. Whereas the citizens of the town of Gilbert rely on local government to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas, through education and awareness and citizens, community leaders, and city staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the town of Gilbert can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of the town of Gilbert joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 18th through the 24th as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Thank you.
Looks like I'm photobombing every time. I know, it's half like.
Want to do some handstands? Do that?
Vice Mayor Ray, next on the agenda, communication from citizens. What requests do we have tonight?
Mayor, we have two requests to speak.
Continue, please.
We'll invite the two speakers to come forward. First, we'll have JW Rahans, followed by Joe Guusik. Each one of you, I believe, have been here once or twice before, but if you will state your name and whether you're a Gilbert resident, and then we'll give each one of you two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Ray, council members. I'd like to begin by thanking all of you for your service. Many of us don't understand the full extent of your time and your passion and your energy for Gilbert. My name is JW Rahans. I am a Gilbert resident. I'm a Gilbert business owner, and I am a dad of children in our public school here in Gilbert. I'd like to share two stories with you. First is, all of us grew up in a school system where we were sat in rows and teachers provided lectures for us to be educated. Now, in moving forward, our kids and grandkids are placed in teams and given projects to solve problems. For all of us, we were primarily trained for jobs and went on to college to move into certain fields of extensive study. Now, in moving forward, our children are expected to be critical thinkers and grow up to be lifelong learners, because we may not even know the jobs that they'll be in in the future. For all of us, we were put in a business culture where it was a culture of longevity, and you stayed with a company for many years, and to have a long training process was acceptable. Now, in moving forward, that business culture is for flexibility, and advancement sometimes means moving from company to company, organization to organization, and therefore, companies have now had the expectation that people will be trained and ready to go as soon as they move into a new role. There are greater expectations now in moving forward. We have greater expectations on our students. We have greater expectations on our teachers. We have greater expectations on our leadership for our school districts, and we expect them to do that with significantly less funding. Complacency is never an option for excellence. I'd like to thank all of you for pursuing and having the leadership to pursue excellence in Gilbert. Right now, we have an opportunity to lead with a great example for our kids and grandkids by mailing in a yes vote for our school districts. Thanks for the opportunity to be with you this evening.
Thank you.
Joe, I think you know the routine.
Two minutes, really? Two? Gilbert resident Joe Guusik, Mayor Lewis, fellow town council member, since I only have so much time, I can only say that much. I'd rather come and speak to you about the Utes and ASU on Saturday, but I can't. I'd rather talk to you about Make a Difference Day on October 24th with all the different projects that we could go out and make a difference on. But I will let Councilwoman Victor Peterson speak about that later via phone, if he so chooses to. As JW just spoke about, education is an absolute. It's an essential. And as I will share with you right now, from Chandler Unified School District, in 2009, their capital funding was reduced by 5%. And as time went by to just this last year, going through the end of next June, their capital funding will be reduced by 85%. I ask you this one question. If I reduced your pay by 85%, would you show up? I don't think so. If your boss, outside of this, reduced your pay by 85%, you would say, no, I have to take care of my children. I have to feed my kids. I have to put a roof over my house. I have to make sure everything is taken care of. I realize that we want to do things extremely efficient and effective in the state of Arizona. But one thing is, you can be foolish when you try to go to an extreme. We need to fund our schools at a level that we can ensure that excellence does happen. In my case, either way, yes or no, I'm going to expect excellence. And if it's no, then guess what? I'm still going to expect it, and I'm going to still expect people to show up, and I'm going to expect people to make it right. I will say this, and I'll finish with this very quickly. I am voting yes, yes. The reason why, as far as the M&amp;O side of things, there's a funding model at the state level, and yes, it's been suppressed. And yes, there's an inflation lawsuit out there that we should all consider resolving very quickly. And the last thing is what I just said. When you reduce the capital funding by 85%, it gets a little difficult to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, no other requests at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to the consent calendar, and Vice Mayor Ray, what request do we have?
Mayor, we've had a request for item number 10, and if you're okay with it, I'm ready to go forward with a motion.
Please.
Mayor, I move that we approve items 3A and B, items 4 through 7, item 8A and B, 9A and B, 11A and B, items 12 through 18, item 19A and B, and item 20.
Second?
With that motion and second please vote. That's approved, and Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved with a 70 vote. Thank you. Okay, that's approved with a 7-0 vote, thank you. The item that wished to be pulled is number 10, is that correct?
That is correct.
And who wished to speak on number 10?
There were a couple of people. I know one was Councilmember Victor Peterson, who's on the telephone.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peterson, any comments you wanted to make or questions?
Mayor, I mostly just pulled this so we could vote on it separately. It's the same conversation we've had many times, so no need to belabor the point. I definitely support the cause. I just don't think it's the right funding source. So that was it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to say, make a comment? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I also don't want to belabor things, but every now and then, I think a good reminder is helpful here. You know, we've heard some discussion tonight about the importance of investing in our children and read a book, interesting, that's, read a book with an interesting question that started off that says, can we, at the same time, can at the same time that we say that we love our children, support policies and actions that actually hurt their future? And it then unpacked just a series of government policies that have gone forth, including things like piling the national debt onto their future that they're going to have to pay off. We know it's between about 55,000 that our children owe right now that us and our parents have piled on them with, you know, the war in Iraq, welfare entitlement spending and things like that. Anyways, and so again, I don't want to belabor the point here, but I certainly would like to challenge us to consider how we can support good things like this, because I definitely support this and appreciate the focus that we have in this. This is something that's important. But at the same time, can we do this out of our general fund where we do have a balance for things like this that are positive, that will support our children, but at the same time not add to, you know, the crushing national debt that they're going to have to face? The money that was pulled down is not our money, it's their money, it's going to be paid back in higher taxes. And anyways, we just wanted to put that thought out there. Again, I don't speak on every single one of these, but I thought that was a really good question. Can we say that we love our children and yet support policies and actions that hurt their future is the question that I would just challenge us to consider as we think about this. So Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Council members, any other comments or questions? So I take it. Chief, thank you for being ready, but we didn't need presentation or discussion. I will entertain a motion on agenda item number 10.
Mayor, I approve that we, I motion that we approve item 10A and 10B.
Second?
With that motion, second, please vote.
Joe?
That's approved with a 5-2 vote, thank you. We move to the public hearing. To council members on 21 and 22, are there desires to have discussions on those two agenda items?
Mayor, item 22 has been removed.
Okay, thank you. So 21, any discussion on that? And are there any requests from the public to speak on 21?
There are not.
Okay. I open the public hearing on agenda item 21, and I close the public hearing on agenda item 21, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve item 21.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote.
Yes.
Okay, that's a 7-0, 7-0 vote, thank you. To the administrative items, agenda item 23, boards, commissions, and committee reports, council members. And Councilmember Peterson, anything that on 23 you wish to share?
Yes, Mayor, I appreciate Joe in bringing this up. Make a Difference Day is coming up, not this Saturday, but next, so there's still time. And we do have a few more opportunities to serve. They're mostly filled, but we don't want people to think they've missed their chance. And so they can go to gilbertcan.org, and there's a landing page there that will direct them to all the projects. We've got things from painting Higley High School, working at Coronado Elementary, some weeding and landscape at Highland High School, and even some work at the food bank and a blood drive, and even helping with some of the hospice patients here in Gilbert. And so some great opportunities, and just invite everyone to get involved. Again, that's gilbertcan.org. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson, thank you. Any other requests from council on agenda item 23? Policy items, future meeting. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Tonight's meeting just reminded me, and this might be a question, Patrick, for you or Lisa, I wondered if we can just look at the 2016 calendar and just compare the council meeting dates with the school calendars with Chandler, Gilbert, and Higley. And as much as we can try to avoid some of those major holidays, that might make some coordination of some of the agenda items and research a little easier on us. Is that something, Mayor?
Yes, and I, so you will know, a year ago, and I'm not passing this on, but a year ago, we did a great job of coordinating, and then one of the districts changed. And that's how it impacted you. Thank you for coming back early. And I think as far as districts do change some of the dates, but we did put that into account as far as our clerk's office could report.
Two of the districts are easy. They do plan out years in advance, and you can go on their website and see when they are. And we do give that to the mayor when we plan out the previous year, but sometimes we can't always get that. But we do try.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Report from the town manager on current events.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
To our citizens, we love our town manager. And to our economic development director, your smile is a little bit wider than our town manager's smile. I don't know if it had anything to do with the Cubs and Cardinals series. I'm not sure if it did. Report from the council on current events. Report from Mayor on current events. Maybe I'll just mention a very successful Barktoberfest last Saturday. The second Saturday of October is when hundreds of dogs come down to town hall, and we have a great event, and all those who participated, thank you. We also, last Saturday, appreciate and thank our parks and recreational team members. There were six playgrounds that were completed near the end of the summer, and last Saturday, we went to one of the playgrounds, Veterans Park, and had a dedication, symbolic of all seven, and wonderful event. And we do appreciate our parks. It's a great part of community livability in Gilbert, Arizona. Thank you, Rod and team. And then the Fall Carnival was also last weekend, and that was taking place at Crossroads Park. A lot of fun, a lot of great events. I had a chance to be down there one of the nights, and very, very vibrant, most, every parking spot that was there was filled, and a lot of good family activities were going on. So with that, I'm now just going to watch closely our town attorney as I take this next step. It is not common, and so I just share this with those who are here in council chambers, that we have an executive session after council meeting. That happens to be the case tonight. So in just a moment, when it seems like we're leaving, the meeting is not actually adjourned, but we'll be moving into executive session. And so before I entertain a motion to move into the executive session, to our town attorney, anything else related to our next meeting that needs to be said?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So move, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We will be meeting in room 233.